Let's call the meeting to order. Time is seven o'clock. Mr. Ritchie, please call the over to roll.
Mr. Ritchie, here. Mr. Serna? Mr. Willenthaler?
Here.
Mr. Donahue? Ms. McDonald? Mr. Deeds?
Here.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Motion. I would say a motion to excuse Ms. McDonald and Mr. Ritchie.
And Mr. Serna and Mr. Donahue?
Yes, Mr. Serna, yes, thank you.
Second. Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler, yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Now, our friends down in the end can correct me, but from previous meetings, I remember with only four of us present, it has to be a perfect vote. One negative vote means a fail. Okay? Just so everyone understands, because our quorum is usually seven and easy for them to pass. So should any commission member vote against it, variance of some kind, it would be defeated. Okay? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes.
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Now, if anyone wishes to speak, this is the part of the meeting for public hearing. You can talk about any subject that is not on our current agenda.
If you can sign, you can hear.
Please.
Hello, my name is Dana Rains and I recently moved back. I live at 6732 Braithwick Court, just off of Gender Road. And I grew up in Canal Winchester, moved away. Graduated from school here in '68. Recently moved back here last August because I always thought Winchester was a special place. And I think it is very special. I don't, I think we can compare it with Dublin, New Albany, whoever else you want to compare it to. You know, with all the warehouses, I think some warehouses are okay, you know, as long as they have their place. Now, my concern is if you start putting warehouses in Diley Road, there's a lot of opportunities there in Diley Road. It's your one place you can develop in Canal Winchester and do something different and positive for the people, more people-centered. I was over at Mount Carmel Medical Center last week and I was just thinking there to be an ideal spot for a stay-in-place senior village, you know, where you have people that move there independently and then as they get older, they get increasing care and services. You're close to stores. You have a good walk system there. I think it goes all the way up to Pickerton. You know, it's fairly easy to get to. You know, I shop over in Diley Road more than I do Gender Road, even though Gender Road's just a mile away because it's not quite as crazy. It's just a little bit more appealing. So I think if you were to get something like a stay-in-place, there's other opportunities there. You know, once you get that, then there's going to be a demand for restaurants and other retail places. You build on that. But if you start putting in warehouses, you really limit the options. I just came, just visited Heath, Ohio here on our, driving through and up there is an area just not, like it's a warehouse desert, basically. So I, I think I just, hopefully we can have vision moving forward. Looking forward to doing the plan, which is long needed. I, in the past in Minnesota, I worked with a nonprofit where I worked with some development plans for communities. And I also was with an extension where I worked with community development, natural resources developments. I do have some background, background in that area. So thank you for letting me speak. Bye.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Angie Halsted, 59 Bucy Road. I'm not going to stay for this whole meeting because I can't. I have to get dedicated so much of my life to this city and council in planning and zoning, ever since our awesome development director does nothing but bring warehouses in. I continue to see them pop up everywhere. I continue to see you do nothing besides bring them in and recommend everything that comes in. It is just a sad shame what's happening around here. We had our own council member resign, basically, because of what is happening in council right now. I think all of you should be very upset what council did. They pretty much just said, "Planning and zoning is not needed." They rescinded that ordinance that you guys voted, I think, six to zero against, which is disgusting, put another one in its place, rezoned it without putting it back through you guys, and said it's an emergency. So now it's an emergency for warehouses. And they did that so we wouldn't referendum it. That's why they did it. You should all be appalled of what's happening. They're pretty much saying, "None of your planning and zoning, they threw it out the window." It doesn't matter what you guys say. Because six of them think they know better. It's getting out of hand. And it's not going to stop. And the more that it's proved, the more they're going to come. I mean, this one on Bucy, you know, I get it's limited manufacturing already. Was that the right for that land? We don't know. We don't have a development plan because the development plan was not done for how many years? We didn't need it, obviously. They know what's best, obviously. People are leaving this city, selling their houses and getting out while the getting's good. And I don't blame them one bit. Am I pissed? I'm super pissed. I should not have to be here. All these people that show up week after week should not have to be here and say the same thing. This developer wants to put trucks on Bucy. Bucy is a farmland road. It cannot handle trucks. Trucks should not be there, period. They're taking up every inch of that property and I'm sure they recommended it. When is enough enough? When are people going to stand up, including you guys? And it sucks that there's three of you guys missing because you all need to hear this. When are we going to stand up and say, "No more"? I mean, even like push back on council. What they're doing is going to change the landscape of this town forever. And every single one of you are going to be affected, except Mr. Hare because he doesn't live here. So why does he care? He doesn't. He doesn't. Promise you. Because if he did, he would not be bringing this into our community. He would be going out there, seeking businesses, seeking good companies. He would be doing his job and not recommending everything that comes past his desk that's low-hanging fruit. I hope you guys do the right thing tonight and at least not let them go with whatever plan that they're going to put in front of you and schmooze everybody like they do. I've watched it for over a year now. Not once did Mr. Hare ever come up to me and talk to me. He goes up to those developers, shakes their hand, rubs elbows. Think about that. Doesn't care about the citizens. Not one bit. Because this would not be what our town is becoming. And if you guys don't think that you're going to be affected because you live in Ashbrook or Westchester, you're going to be affected. Good luck getting anywhere. Good luck with all the wrecks. Good luck with all the madness, the infrastructure can't support it. And your taxes are going to go up no matter what because they don't even know what it's going to cost to fix the roads or to maintain all of this. Promise you, I've done lots and lots and lots of research over this year and a half. Put my heart and soul in this. And it literally breaks my heart what's happening. Watch the max, mass exit it because it's happening. People are selling. Appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Vasco. I live at 65 West Columbus Street. And Angie Halsted basically summed up everything that I feel that's going on in this community right now. She sort of took quite a few of the things that I wanted to say. She's already got them on the book, but I wanted to be on the book to come up here and say, to confirm that, that I agree 100% with her. You are going to see a lot of good people exit this community. It's started. We know who the people are. We know who's looking. But what I would beg of this commission is that you look at what's crossing your desk very carefully and you stick to our code. Do not do variances for everybody that wants a variance. If it's not right for the space, don't do it. And don't let someone talk you into doing it because that is wrong. Follow our laws to the best of your ability. And don't take any heat from any other entities that say this has to go through because we ran utilities up there and the utilities are there without any planning. And would that be embarrassing if Columbus got a hold of that land and Canal Winchester had paid all of this money? You guys are the starting point for some of this stuff. Look at it closely. Don't let it go through if it's not right. And the other thing also is you guys should feel violated, slapped in the face that this council moved forward with a plan, with a plan that completely disregarded your opinion. And they didn't do it once, they did it twice. Maybe they did it more than that. But when you sit down and you put it all together, you put it back-to-back for that particular location, and when you put a map together and you start to look at Canal Winchester, yeah, we're becoming the boxed-in community warehouse, community of warehouses. That's what's happening to us. You guys, you guys too. It's on all corners. So if you're getting heat from someplace, council, someone in the government of Canal Winchester, don't listen to it. Even if it goes to council and you guys are slapped in the face again, do it, keep doing it. Hold them accountable. You guys are the starting point. And maybe at some point, we can hold some kind of hope that something different is going to happen. And maybe you will be the reason that something different happens. But this government right now is just a runaway government. And it breaks my heart, too. I've lived here for a long time. And even though I am in the village, the downtown village, and maybe it won't affect me so much, I have lived here a long time. My kids have gone to school here. I have grandchildren here now. And it does make a difference. I do feel strongly about it. I am passionate about, about my community. And I am, I'm just asking you guys to do your job. Just do your job, even if you know they're going to turn it down. Because they will. They will slap you in the face again and they will betray you. And I just don't get it. There's other stuff out there that we can be working on. And the community plan didn't get here. It's not going to be here soon enough before this is just here. It is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if you're going to speak to the commission tonight, you will need to take an oath. If you plan on talking to the commission at all, please rise. Do you swear to tell the truth, to nothing but the truth, to the best of your knowledge? If so, please say, "I do." Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff for the first.
The first application on tonight's agenda is conditional use CU 22-002. The address of the subject property is 152 West Waterloo Street. The request this evening is a conditional use to Section 1161.04B, subsection 1, to allow for an automobile repair and service store on the subject property. This parcel consists of 0.69 acres located on the north side of West Waterloo Street in the Old Town District. The property's owned Old Town Commercial. The request this evening is to relocate the Napa Auto Parts Store from down the street at 132, 130 West Waterloo, 103 West Waterloo Street to this location. The applicant has put together their report here showing that the existing building is currently vacant. It was originally constructed as a super-duper grocery store. Since then, it's had a handful of different business-related uses and construction-related uses that have occupied the space. The conditional use, again, is to move the current facility from 103 West Waterloo. The current Napa store is located in the same Old Town Commercial zoning district that has been located in that existing facility since 1971. The current location to this, the applicant feels, is going to be an increase in the convenient and safety in the traffic flow as this site has two dedicated curb cuts that force traffic in and out of the site much more efficiently than the existing facility, which has over 130 feet of frontage along West Waterloo Street. The, again, the proposed use is a conditional use and the applicable development standards for the existing building are met. This property, being in the Old Town District, is regulated by the Landmarks Commission for any exterior changes to the subject building. And that the proposed use here will fulfill a vacant space that has been revitalized in the Old Town area and will allow for the existing space to be renovated once it becomes vacant. Up on the screen, I do have a photograph of the existing Napa location here, an aerial view just to show you the exhibit the applicant and staff was talking about with the access on West Waterloo Street. In terms of parking and other code-related items, those are all being met with this relocation. So the request this evening is simply just to move the existing tenant from one space to another. So staff is recommending that the conditional use application CU 22-002 be approved as presented. The applicant's meeting the criteria for the Old Town Commercial Conditional Use section. And again, the existing Napa facility has been operating in Canal Winchester since 1971 when the building was constructed. And they're looking to maintain their presence in the Old Town area.
Is the applicant present?
Yes. My name's Todd Weiser. I represent RR C T L L C. We own the building. And just a little more history. Last February, Napa Corporate and the local Napa owners came to us and wanted to talk about leasing a space 1,600 foot bigger than their existing building. And that's the driver on this. So we sat with the city and went through what we needed to do. And the conditional use came up that was required to do this. So that's why it's been filed. It's a friendly thing with Napa and Corporate. It's not like we're stealing a tenant there. Both the local owners and the corporate store are in favor of this. We have a lease within the next 48 hours from Napa Corporate. So that's what our story is. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer for you.
Do any committee members have questions to the applicant or staff?
I, I think just as a clarification, if I remember right, when we did the Old Town overlay, right, the automotive use is what makes it conditional, right? Because we didn't have that specified in the overlay now.
Yeah, that's correct. So what makes this the conditional use requirement is really triggered because we applied to the classification for automobile and repair for our parts store back when Autozone wanted to go on Gender Road for that review process. So that set the precedent for requiring any facility that sells parts for automobile repair and services to go through the conditional use process. It was, to my knowledge, written with the intent to help regulate places that changed oil and actually did open bodywork and other more sensitive things in the Old Town area. But because of the prior application, looking at the context of what they did, it fell under this, this exchange as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? The leader? Thank you, Mr. Weiser.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing. Is anyone who would like to speak on behalf, for either for or against?
Mr. Chairman, seeing none, I move we close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Motion to approve conditional use CU 22-002.
Second. Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
The motion passes.
The next application on tonight's agenda is variance 22-006. The location of the subject property is 300 Washington Street. The applicant is requesting a variance from Chapter 1195.04C, Section 3, to allow for an accessory building to exceed the maximum size permitted for residential property. The applicant is seeking to construct a 40-by-40 garage addition on the existing maintenance building up on the screen. The maintenance building is adjacent to the star on my map. The subject property is the Canal Winchester High School. This property is zoned low-density residential. The property itself consists of the entire kind of Canal Winchester High School complex site, excluding the football stadium and excluding the old school building at 100 Washington Street. The applicant is requesting this variance, again, to add an addition to the existing 40-by-64 garage that was 2,560 square feet. The total for the building with the addition would be 4,160 square feet. The applicant received a variance for the existing building in 2003, I believe, with variance application VA 03-01. That variance was to have the existing building at the 40-by-64, a height of 25 feet. The existing variance was approved as presented. When looking at the application contents itself, the property is used for a school and for a school, you have to be zoned a residential district. Virtually every developed parcel in the area is a traditional single-family home on less than one acre of land. The school, again, encompasses a large area and performs many functions. This in turn makes the school unique for land use in a residential district and they have different needs than a traditional residential property. The literal interpretation of the zoning code would not deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. However, on the other hand, there are other properties in the R3 district that have accessory structures that exceed the allowable size and/or number. Most of those properties are fronting Washington Street that are older, that have had historic sizes to those buildings. In terms of special circumstances or condition, they are not resulted by the actions of the applicant but are in response to the functions of the commonly provided by the schools. This variance would not confer any undue privileges denied to other properties in the same zoning district. It would not adversely affect the public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare of the immediate area. When looking at the existing building conditions, the addition is going on the north side of that building. With the addition, they'll be able to have more storage of their equipment that services the property grounds. Over time, with the growing student population and the growing building capacity for students, the needs for this facility have grown. With the addition, they are looking to add three overhead garage doors that will add to the capacity for their equipment needs. They're also looking, after this process, to do an overhaul of the maintenance building to make it easier for staff. They want to add heat to it. They want to do more of a kind of office area on the inside for the maintenance staff. Right now, it simply is an open garage with one restroom. So this facility will kind of set the, the next pace for them to have a growth in the facility. In terms of the way that the building proposal to look, it will match existing building. Again, there's adding three additional garage doors on the east elevation and then a man door on the west elevation to access the rear of the building. So staff is recommending that VA 22-006 be approved as presented. The increase in the maintenance garage size, again, is due to the increase in services the school offers to house the additional equipment and staff that has grown over time to aid the student population.
Any questions to staff?
Are all the school properties R3?
There is a combination. So the elementary schools are zoned R3. The middle school is a PUD or PRD zoning, which is a residential classification. The old high school building is Old Town Single Family. So they all have to fall within a residential zoning category for a school to be a permitted use. Just depending on kind of where the location is or what their plans are for growth. The middle school did a planned district to kind of set that pace for what they wanted. But yes, they're all a residential type of zoning.
Is that our requirement or a statement?
That's our requirement, yes.
Okay. It just seems like we're, we're not setting a terrible precedent because I think I don't, everyone understands the situation. But it just seems odd that we're trying to put this round peg in a square hole, so.
Yeah, the, the zoning category is really created to keep the schools adjacent to residential home development. And when you look at the way that the kind of zoning map is structured here, you have that residential zoning that are clustered together to create that, that symbiotic relationship. So that's really why we, our zoning requires the, any school to be in a residential kind of category.
Any other questions to staff? Do you have to compress it?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to add to staff's report, or?
I think he covered all of it pretty well.
Does anybody have any questions to the applicant? I guess you get off easy tonight. Public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak on this topic?
Mr. Chairman, seeing none, I move we close.
I'll second it myself.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
All motion approved, variance VA-22-006. I'll second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Steve, were you talking to your microphone fast? I think it's muted.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
I'm going to try to turn that one on. Give me just a moment.
You said we couldn't mute them.
Well, I can mute them, you can't mute them. Say something again, please.
What would you like me to say? Oh, they can hear.
Oh, that's better. Thank you.
I thought I was the only one who muted.
The next application on tonight's agenda is variance 22-009. The address of the subject property is 213 Sarwell Drive North. The request this evening is a variance to Section 1195.04A to allow for a Again, the subject parcel is Lot 227 in Winchester Village. This development was plotted by Tiger Construction in the 1990s. Lot 227 is the final vacant lot to be developed. This property is retained by Tiger Construction until sold in 2017. This lot was the location for the construction and sales trailer for the neighborhood as it was being developed. The applicant is seeking approval to construct a single-family home on the parcel that will have both an attached two-car garage to the rear of the home and a second two-car garage that will be to the south of the principal structure. The variance this evening is only for the detached garage location. Chapter 1195.04a requires for all accessory structures to be located completely to the rear of the principal structure. So in this case, the garage would have to be located behind the rear building line of the existing single-family home, which would put it in the rear setback for that property. This parcel is unique in that it does have two existing private utility lines that service the Winchester, that service the skilled nursing and rehabilitation center that's located to the rear that bisect the center of the lot. There is an existing sewer line that services the site that is almost square in the middle of the lot that goes parallel with the north and south property lines that connect to a sanitary sewer system in the development. And then there is an existing water line that starts the, kind of, bisecting the lot the same to the rear, but does kind of taper at an angle as it's getting to the front of the lot. This unique circumstance is creating the, basically forced perspective of that home design being put to that north property line. The building itself does meet the development standards for the Winchester Village subdivision in terms of its minimum square footage, the setbacks, and the requirement for a garage on the parcel. The applicant, in this instance, is only requesting for the detached garage based off of the desire of the person who wants to develop the lot to have extra storage space on the parcel itself. Special circumstances exist that are not applicable to other lands or structures. Again, as I noted, the site is impeded with existing utilities that serve the nursing home to the west. When looking at the past on how to relocate these existing utilities, the water line was being explored to be relocated to the south property line, but the nursing home required, I believe, a standby fire service for the entire duration of that construction project to be put on, and then also required portable water and other means to service the facility during the relocation of that line. That in itself became cumbersome to the development of this lot and just added a lot of cost to it. So staff worked with the property owner to come up with the building design that you see here. So it does meet the development text itself. Just without the existing, the proposed garage on the south side, that entire portion of the parcel would be left vacant. The literal interpretation of the zoning code would not deprive applicants of rights enjoyed by other parcels. However, relief from this section would allow for this lot to be constructed in what the applicant believes is a usable manner. The existing lot configuration utilities are not a result of the applicant. It's unclear why the nursing home utilities tie back into this street for the subdivision. There were no easements for this, these private utilities when Tiger Construction owned it. It wasn't until 2017 when a private entity purchased the property to build a house on it, they discovered the easements or the utilities and created the easements to allow for them to remain. Granted, this variance would not confer any undue privileges denied by the zoning district. The accessory structure setbacks is regulated to keep things like swimming pools, sheds, and other items completely behind the residential home. When this code section was written, it was uncommon for having garages detached from the home. So there was a trend at the time when it was written to regulate other items, not necessarily garages. Granted, this variance would not adversely affect the public health, safety, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. And granted, this variance is not solely based upon this property being put to better economic use. There is an economic benefit for not relocating the existing utilities across the site, but again, the home design that is being requested would not have to come a planning and zoning commission and just get a building permit for it, so the applicant's just seeking for the accessory building. So staff is recommending that variance application VA 22-009 be approved as presented. Again, with the existing utilities cross center of the parcel, developing it as a traditional single-family home is, it makes that a challenge. The applicant has provided plans for home design that does meet the standards for the neighborhood, along with the zoning requirements to have a garage on the parcel with it being attached to the rear. Zoning requires every single-family home property being developed has to have a garage. It doesn't matter if it's attached or detached. The applicant, in this instance, is just requesting for both.
Any questions to staff?
You talked about the existing lines run to the center of the property. There's a proposed sewer line on that shea. Is that?
So the proposed sewer line is for the home construction.
Okay.
So that's what will connect to an existing tap that is to service that lot in that southeast corner. So they put the taps in for the subdivision when the lots are being plotted. But again, we had no record of these utilities for the nursing home going through the lot or else that would have been reviewed during the tech, civil tech review. So we're thinking at some point after when the utilities were, well, it had to have been after utilities were put in to serve the subdivision, the nursing home tied in this direction.
What was her?
And they tied in through this parcel, because again, this parcel was only for the job trailer for the subdivision neighborhood, so they had no need for it at the time.
Okay.
Okay. I was wondering about that, too. Any other questions to staff?
Are those the primary lines to the nursing home?
It is. They're the only lines.
Is that going to be, this would crossing over them with this proposed sewer line?
So with the proposed sewer that crosses over, they just have to meet the minimum threshold for the depth to actually do the crossing, and then they would have to do some anti-infiltration barriers to help ensure that basically nothing seeps out of one pipe and gets into the other. It's a standard kind of construction process we do for a larger scale development. This is kind of focused in on this one lot.
The nursing home's built in this lab. This is on a basement, so this line would be lower.
Very well. Any other questions to staff?
Now, the only other one is recent variance 2016. That was the log cabinet on the corner, correct, Roy?
Correct.
Okay. So it's, several have come in front of us, but most of them, not several, a few have come in front of us, but they have not had very specific, the variances have been very specific.
Correct.
I'm just thinking through history of how we got to where we're at.
Yep. A lot of times, this variance process comes up with corner lots. The corner lot in East Columbus, there's another corner lot in this development where someone bought a vacant parcel that was adjacent to theirs, and they have a building that's up on it that doesn't meet the location requirements. It is not as forward as this one, but it's on a separate lot they combined, so it has a similar circumstance.
Okay. There they go. Is the applicant present? We have no questions for the applicant. Public hearing, anybody want to speak on the topic?
Mr. Chairman, seeing none, move close.
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willthar?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve variance VA 22-009.
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willthar?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
The next application on tonight's agenda is variance application 22-008. The location of the subject property is 729 and 759 Winchester Pike. The request this evening is a variance to Section 1189.12 subsection I to allow for a changeable copy, specifically electronic, on the gasoline pumps in the subject parcel. This is the parcel that has been approved to develop as a Sheetz Fuel Center. For those of you in the public that are not aware of the long history of this property in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant received approval for the site to be used as a Sheetz Convenience Market Fuel Center in April of 2022. That includes a 4,900-square-foot convenience market with a detached fuel canopy that features 12 fueling stations at six pumps. Again, the applicant is requesting for a total of four signage variances this evening. This is the first one to be discussed. This one is to have the center kind of display area of the pumps. That typically tells you the information on what you're selecting. Would you like a receipt to those additional items? To be an electronic display for advertisement purposes. The applicant has provided an example of what their messages are for the commission's consideration this evening. The applicant has put together their request to allow for this type of signage and that it does not have any audio to it. It is just strictly video. And that with talking to the applicant, they do not believe that point-of-purchase sale advertisement is enforceable by our zoning district. So they would like to request relief from this section. For staff's review, special circumstances and conditions do not exist. The applicant is requesting to install electronic message board on each gasoline pump would be a total of 12 electronic displays. These displays are to direct and attract attention to a video that has changeable content, which specifically is prohibited by the zoning code. For literal interpretations of the zoning code, but not deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties, the zoning standards were adopted by city council to restrict electronic message displays. These are a prohibited signage type for all zoning proper, zoning categories within the city. The special circumstances and circumstances do not exist for this variance request. The applicant notes that they are requesting the ability to be allowed to have video displays on the gasoline pumps to attract attention. The variance would confer undue privilege as otherwise denied by the zoning code. Other gasoline stations and commercial businesses that the applicant notes in their report do have the same prohibition on video change and displayable content. These displays were really what prompted the prohibition for all electronic displays and specifically the zoning section that prohibits any additional signage on a gasoline pump station. The granting of variance should not adversely affect the public health, safety, convenience, and prosperity. However, it will allow for 12 fuel pumps to have digital advertisement displays that are intended to direct and attract attention per the applicant's letter they put together for this. Additionally, the staff did pull up that from the, if I can get this, the, the planning zoning meeting in April, when the applicant was requesting approval for the site development plan, they did provide a letter based off of the staff report for the site development plan to be denied due to insufficient information. One of the items staff recognized was that they had not provided any detail for the fuel pump areas, and staff wanted to note that signage in these areas is not permitted. The applicant responded to the letter, passed it out to the planning and zoning commission, and said that they would comply with this restriction specifically. So staff is recommending that variance VA 22-008 for the electronic changeable copy signage be denied as presented. The applicant is proposing to have digital content displayed at the gasoline pumps for the purposes of advertising for the convenience market located within the Sheetz facility.
Questions to staff?
Just to be thorough, we don't have these at other places that have gas pumps, right?
So the applicant in their submittal here, they have provided an exhibit that shows, let me see if I can find it here on the worksheet. Hold up for you guys. So on the last sheet here, they show several facilities that have existing video displays. The Speedway, they note, have monitors and audio. The SnoCo has static images after fuel selected. Both of these facilities have these systems that predate the zoning ordinance to restrict it. And again, these were part of the decision-making that council made to restrict this type of digital content. We have had for a long time a restriction on electronic and manual message boards. That content had become more specific within the zoning code to prohibit signage on gasoline pumps specifically. That is the next variance they're requesting for signs on the gasoline pumps. However, this is for the electronic display specific sign that they're requesting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is the applicant present?
We'll have to sign. We'll have to sign in after we can find a pen.
Oh, someone walked away with it?
That's fine. My name's Rebecca Green. I'm with Zoning Resources, and I'm at 74 Glenn Drive in Worthington.
Jim McFarland, Zoning Resources, 84 Skyline Drive, Asheville.
As you know, that each of these many, anytime you go to a self-service gas station, you encounter one of these kinds of screens. If it's, usually you see on it, and I know when I go, I see whether it wants me to use my credit card or debit card, whether I can use maybe fuel points on my card or from a card or from a loyalty program. It allows me to select receipts or car washes and this sort of thing. And that's the kind of content that you normally see on this kind of screen. And again, that is a content issue. What we're asking here is to include customer-initiated content. It's not as if these messages are scrolling every day, all day, 24 hours a day. They are brought to, they are brought up when a customer initiates contact with that pump, when the customer is interested in purchasing gas. That's when it comes up. That's the content that is always on that kind of screen. The city does regulate changeable copy. This is true. And this, but what we're looking at here is a screen that everywhere, in every, every pump is using changeable copy, whether it's the moving of the copy to accept my loyalty card, or in this case, this kind of content here that is merely trying to suggest items within the store. If the city was interested in not regulating content, then they would look at the size of these screens, the brightness of these screens, and I'm sure there are some code sections regarding illumination. They might be regulating the colors of these screens, but in this case, they're only regulating the content of these screens. And I think that is somewhat troublesome. If you would, and because they are customer-initiated, these are not, these are the kind of screens that, yes, they are directed, and yes, they are intended to display and have an advertisement in this case, but they are not on all the time. They are not distracting from the property line. They do not impact a street. They are not large. They are not tall. They are simply used for this purpose of communicating with a customer who is asking for that information, asking to get information regarding this store and buying gas. The city does regulate changeable copy, this is true, and this, but what we're looking at here is a screen that everywhere, and every pump is using changeable copy. Whether it's the moving of the copy to accept my loyalty card, or in this case, this kind of content here that is merely trying to suggest items within the store. If the city was interested in not regulating content, then they would look at the size of these screens, the brightness of these screens, and I'm sure there are some code sections regarding illumination. They might be regulating the colors of these screens, but in this case, they're only regulating the content of these screens. And I think that is somewhat troublesome. If you would, and because they are customer-initiated, these are not, these are the kind of screens that, yes, they are directed, and yes, they are intended to display and have an advertisement in this case, but they are not on all the time. They are not distracting from the property line. They do not impact a street. They are not large. They are not tall. They are simply used for this purpose of communicating with a customer who is asking for that information, asking to get information regarding this store and buying gas. Did you have anything else?
Yeah, I was just also, haven't been able to locate any pending violations that have been issued in the jurisdiction regarding people that are violating this particular type of graphic. Also haven't been aware of any complaints that have been given regarding any nuisances created by this type of a graphic. We also represent many gas stations around the Midwest beside Sheets, and generally the kinds of things that jurisdictions are concerned about have to do with what's on top of the pump itself. The items that are plastic that are, that don't stand up under weather, that become just very problematic, generally they're not enforced in a lot of jurisdictions, as well as graphics and signs that go on the sides of the fuel pumps. We tend to see lots of variances, lots of restrictions from that standpoint. We've never yet encountered a jurisdiction that has addressed the type of graphic that is on the pricer unit as being of any kind of concern. The shifting of the types of technology that's used for these fuel stations is consistent across all vendors. I just recently came back from International Sign Association's annual conference down in Atlanta, where we witnessed all kinds of technologies that codes will never be able to continue to come up with because the technologies continue to evolve. And we also understand that this is a conditional type of an element that's being allowed, and that this was overlooked in the conditional use process. However, we didn't perceive that to be defined as such, a changeable copy. It just doesn't seem to make, it didn't make sense as well. And because of the minor nature of this type of graphic, the infrequency of it's coming on, the consistency of it being prevalent in the jurisdiction, the lack of any notable violations or complaints being given regarding other locations, and I also would note that there is no audio, there will not be audio displayed, and just to reiterate what Ms. Green said, that these are graphics that only come on at the point of sale. And in fact, we think that it would be a little more consistent to consider these in the standpoint of a drive-through menu board. That this is cars' drive-through, they put in a credit card, they can see things that could be ordered or repurchased inside. It is not seven-foot high, it is smaller than three square feet, it is, you know, it is significantly less impacting, in fact, it is not impacting to anyone else other than the customer standing there. I don't know that Sheets has received complaints from any of their customers yet, and any of their fifty-five stores coming into this area in terms of those being a problem. More have there been any complaints from any of the jurisdictions in central Ohio, from any other enforcement officers, that that type of a graphic has been a nuisance or is in a violation. So we understand, and I respect the code, I have a code enforcement background, and I appreciate Andrew's diligence in this because it is difficult to keep up with the codes. And while we are aware that this could have been, should have been part of a conditional use, we do believe that without having this ability to use the technology that these things are designed for, we are not able to be competitive with other gas stations that are utilizing this. And it will be less of a nuisance than what the Speedway one is. We went down there, it's very loud, very noisy audio, but I could hear several areas over, so. Is my time up?
No.
Okay.
My apologies.
It's okay.
Forgot to turn it down. Any other questions?
So, I've got a couple of comments. Overlooked in the conditional use process, it was not. It was specifically talked about, and a letter was written in sign saying, "We will not do this." The code was specifically written for this very reason, because of issues we had with other gas stations. I don't believe that I'm at a spot, I didn't write the code, I was not an elected official within the council that voted on this code. I'm not a spot sitting here today to say that I'm going to override council on what they wrote into the zoning code. My job today is to enforce the code and what's in there, and right now it says this is absolutely not approved, black and white in the code.
My concern then is that, is it this, is it this, this particular kind of message? Or is it any message on this screen? But you have a lot of screens in this jurisdiction with this, with messaging on this kind of screen. You have people wanting, or you have gas stations looking for my credit card information, for my choices on gas, for my loyalty program, and this is all allowed, and it is changeable copy on a screen, not dissimilar to this one. And it's being allowed.
Is it advertisement, or is it changeable copy, I guess is the question that-
That is a question to look at.
That's the question we have to think about.
And whether or not you're regulating content, or just the manner in which it's presented.
I guess while the commission is still looking at this application here, the applicant did bring up the comment on the menu boards for drive-throughs that are electronic. Within that section of the code for a menu board, it does prohibit any animated flashing or display of content specifically. So, and this is where we have more directive on how to do something and for it to be code compliant. Those are restrictions that are put in place. Those contents are also not allowed to change any more than twice in a twenty-four-hour period, basically to adjust for a breakfast and a lunch-dinner menu. So, in the example that the applicant provided, if they're comparing themselves to a menu board for a drive-through, that this would not be permitted in the way that they're showing that display to be done. You know, if they were filing a variance to allow for twelve drive-through menu boards for each of the pumps to display food, that was displayed in the zoning code, then they would have to follow those standards. But in this instance, our code says that no sign shall be attached to a gasoline pump, which makes it very black and white on how the signage is being displayed here. It has the word Sheets plastered all over it. It's showing content that is for sale, not at the gasoline pump, but inside of the facility. So that is why it's being regulated in this manner.
I guess the most recent one, right, is Friendship, and we held them to the same standards, right?
Yes, so Friendship Kitchen is not permitted to have any of this advertisement display on their screens. And that's in their sign code, their sign permit did not request for any of this, you know, visual advertisement. Admittedly, I haven't been there since the pumps have been turned on to see if they have that on the display or not. I think they just opened on Monday. But, you know, if they are in violation of that, then they'll be, you know, notified. And I've already talked to them about a couple of site-related issues to get the site wrapped up, to get their full occupancy, so, you know, I will be out there again to do another physical site inspection where I could take a look at that.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Can we provide you with any additional information that would be helpful in making this decision?
All right, I just had one, I keep looking at this one statement on your documentation here. The variance for Sheets' temporary sign program is only during the time the store is under construction and is the minimum needed to communicate to local residents that Sheets can find employees. You imply that you're going to have a sign up there, then you're going to take it down.
That's for another request that they have later for a banner.
Pardon?
That's a later request that they have.
In their statements.
One of the four.
Is that one of the four?
Yeah, in the statements they put together, they grouped all the signed variances into one big statement.
One version.
Yeah, we got so many of them here, but-
Right.
Yeah, I would say we typically make applicants aware because there are only four members here. You have a right to ask to table the application for consideration by the full commission, if you would prefer to do that.
How many are missing?
Three.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You would need everyone here this evening to vote in favor of the application for it to pass.
Sure. I guess we would request to table then.
Do we have to do that by motion? That's what I thought, okay.
And first, it'd be up to the acting chairman this evening if they want to continue the public hearing to the next one that's tabled, or if, since there is public here this evening, and the application was supposed to close the public hearing and just table the discussion.
Okay. So no other questions for applicant, so we'll go to public hearing. Does anyone who wishes to speak? Ms. Lasko?
Um, to me, I'm not in planning and zoning, but to me, it seems pretty simple. It goes against our code, and when the statement is made, it's being initiated by the person pumping gas. It's not really being initiated by the person pumping gas. It is being, well, yeah, it's being initiated at that point, but that person isn't necessarily requesting, "I want this." It's a sales tactic, and as I recall several years ago, and you guys can go back and look in your notes, when BrewDog was requesting specific signage, when they had certain signage requests that they wanted after they were all in and everything was set up, you guys were very cautious how you proceeded with those requests from BrewDog. So I would keep that in mind as you are making that decision, though this may seem like a small, a small issue. I wouldn't even notice it probably if I went in, because I don't even look at it, but a lot of people would. So just, again, look at your code, look at what the decisions that you guys made when BrewDog was requesting it. Do I have to sign in again?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move we close public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Wiltar?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Oops, chug with the word.
Mr. Chairman, I move we table VA dash twenty-two dash zero zero eight.
Second.
At the request of the applicant, right?
At the request, yes. Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Wiltar?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
The next variance application on tonight's agenda is VA twenty-two dash zero one zero. The request this evening is a variance to section eleven-eighty-nine point one-two subsection L to allow for a halo signage to be attached to the top of the gasoline pump. The applicant this evening is requesting for a less than one-square-foot halo topper for the gasoline pump. That can be shown on the screen. That is item number one at the very top of the screen this evening. The applicant is requesting that there is a special circumstance that exists. Staff notes that the applicant is requesting to have signage on the halo in the upper portion of the pumps. This is similar to other halo-type signage at other fuel centers within the community. The literal interpretation of the zoning code would prohibit any signage that is attached to the gasoline pump. This section was not intended to prohibit a halo topper for identification purposes. However, it was written to prohibit the four other types of signage that another Sheets or common Sheets location has on the facility. You have here what the applicant would call a pump topper, which is the, you ask for it in green in this example. What I'm going to assume they call the pumps topper topper is you ask for it in yellow, which is above it. You have their rewards kind of smartphone initiative on the side of the pump here, and then you have the digital display in the center of the screen. Again, all five of these examples, including the topper, is what is prohibited by this zoning section. However, the halo topper is something that is, really wasn't written in this zoning section to prohibit. The Friendship Kitchen Fuel Center was permitted to have the halo topper in their recent signage permit application. The variance for this application should not constitute that the point-of-purchase display topper, which are kind of these other two items, would be permitted. Granting this variance for the halo topper would not confer any undue privilege. The display topper, this shape of the machine is built into the gas station regardless that they put the signage on it or not. It's really to kind of hold and house all the hosing canopies from the research I have found on kind of why they're prevalent in all these locations. And that the halo topper should not provide any adverse effect to the public health, safety, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare. The display topper and the other kind of items that are shown on this screen, however, would allow for additional outdoor signage that is intended to be limited by our sign code, and this could have a potential to adversely affect the public health, safety, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. So staff is recommending for this application, VA twenty-two dash zero one zero, that the signs mounted to the gasoline pumps be approved with the following conditions: that the halo topper that reads Sheets is less than one square foot or smaller. The variance approval for this recommendation does not constitute any fuel pump display topper or signage of any kind attached to the gasoline pump that is otherwise prohibited by chapter eleven-eighty-nine point one-two L, and that this variance does not permit any electronic message displays or changeable copy signs at the gasoline pumps in reference to the previous application that was recommended for denial.
Just to be a bit of a clarification, it says each fueling station, is that-
There are six pumps, but twelve fueling stations, so each side of the pump is a fueling station.
Okay, good to know. Is that, that's in the code?
That is how the applicant has defined it.
Okay.
Throughout this process, when they talked about the breakdown of the uses they have on the property.
So, and the code is specific just to the Sheets logo, not the halo, not the halo surrounded the top. The sign is the actual sticker.
So the way that our zoning code is written, if you look at it, kind of the black and white with how it's written, it prohibits any signage on a gasoline pump, including the halo topper. When looking at the zoning categories for allowed signage for any type of business, you know, you're allowed to have wall signs, awning signs, window signs, because this structure is not a building, it doesn't have a wall. So this halo topper sign is just prohibited by the section that prohibits signs attached to a gasoline pump. Again, it was not written, I wrote the sign update, so it wasn't written in the intent to prohibit this type of signage. Specifically, it was more for the point-of-sale advertisements, those other kind of eye-catching devices that the applicant specifically mentioned in the previous application. In the instance, for the Friendship Kitchen, their sign permit was permitted in February of this year during that permit approval. While they did not provide a detail for what their sign showed on the pump, they provided detail for what it was on the canopy. It was on that drawing. It was something that admittedly, I wasn't looking for it, because, you know, it's not something regulated, so it was approved. So to keep things fair between that project and this project, staff's recommending that this variance does get its approval for the halo topper.
It serves more of a purpose as directional signage, so we allow directional signage with company logos on them. So typically, you'll see enter/exit signs for parking lots. It'll have the company logo with the word "Enter" and an arrow, so this serves generally the same purpose as a directional sign. Those are regulated in terms of size.
And I believe, Mr. Ritchie, that graphic you're looking at, the applicant, does show they have an option for a larger than one square foot, and they also have additional sticker, I believe, that they stick somewhere else on the sign, but they are requesting for only the halo topper.
Okay, can you just play your conditions again that you were suggested?
So staff's condition of approval is that the less than one-square-foot halo topper, which is this, I'm circling on the screen, be permitted, but all other of these arrows that are pointing at other types of signage and- But all other of these arrows that are pointing at other types of signage, and Luke just pointed out, I missed one right above the sticker that shows the fuel price, that the rest of these be prohibited with the variance approval. It's specifically noted in the motion that the only one type is being requested this evening. And just for kind of clarification, with tabling the other application, prohibiting it in this motion would make the other application a no.
Anything else?
That's all.
Applicant?
A quick clarification. So you're saying if they approve this application with all those conditions as stated, then the prior application would no longer be relevant, or be, would have, you would not need to hear it then at the next meeting, because you would be...
If they approve it with the conditions as outlined for the property, then yes. Because condition number three is prohibiting the electronic message display. If they modify the conditions to remove condition number three, or table the application in its entirety, or, you know, change staff's recommendation, but staff's recommendation as a whole is to also prohibit the previous application, is to recommend denial on the previous application.
Understood. Applicant obviously would like to continue to be able to present information regarding the prior application and would ask that condition number three be removed from this application.
I'd say if that's the case, then I would almost want to make a motion to table this until next meeting with the other property members.
I would concur. Yeah.
But we can only do that if the applicant approves, correct? Or can we table it ourselves?
You can table it yourselves or the applicant.
It gives us more time if the applicant concurs.
Okay. Got it. I know there's a closing clock, right?
Otherwise, we have to, we have to vote at the next meeting on this application.
Okay.
If we table.
Yeah, so the applicant would obviously concur.
Okay. So I'll be, we're happy to make a motion to table.
We still need to have a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Public hearing.
After the public hearing.
Public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move close.
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
All right, motion to, yes, table variance VA-22-10?
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
The next application on tonight's agenda is variance 22-011. This is a variance to Chapter 1189, Section 10, Subsection B, to allow for a series of freestanding signs to be erected longer, have more than the permitted maximum per business, and be closer to the right-of-way than was permitted by the zoning code. The applicant is requesting this evening for five temporary post-signs to be located on the property to advertise for now-hiring events. These signs are to be placed around the site two feet from the property line and be up for a total of 35 days for their application. The zoning code requires a maximum of two temporary signs in a calendar year for a maximum of 14 days to be erected, and they have to be a minimum of 10 feet away from the right-of-way. The applicant is asking for special circumstances and conditions. Staff believes that these do not exist. The applicant is requesting to have an increase in the number of now-hiring signs than what would typically be permitted to have. While the duration of the now-hiring sign is not strictly, as strictly regulated as other temporary signage, the number of signage is limited to one per site. The literal interpretation of the zoning code would not deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zoning district. Hiring event signage is permitted for all businesses. The special circumstances do not exist for this variance request. The applicant is requesting for a number of signs that exceed the amount permitted for construction and now-hiring events for the new store. The new construction banners is another variance request that will be next on the agenda. Granted, this variance would confer undue privilege, that's denied by the zoning code. While the duration of now-hiring signs has been flexible to encourage employment, the number of signage is regulated. Granted, this variance could adversely affect the public safety, comfort, and general welfare. The number of signs that are being requested are proposed to be within two feet of the public right-of-way. Signage is restricted to be a minimum of 10 feet of the public right-of-way, to not impede on motor vehicle and pedestrian traffic. And granted, this variance is not based on showing the property put to a better economic use than what is presently permitted. And granted, this variance does not change the zoning district for what's permitted as a conditional use for a convenience market is allowed within the general commercial zoning district. So staff is recommending that VA-22-011 be denied as presented. The applicant has the ability to have a "construction coming soon" sign that meets the sign regulations, and they can also then replace the "construction coming soon" signs with a now-hiring banner when they're at that stage of the construction process. So for the applicant to request for five temporary signs, three of which are on a least-traveled public right-of-way, Winchester Pike really just doesn't make sense for this content of this application.
Questions to staff?
So the current sign they have up, construction, the construction sign, has been up for, let me back up. The current code allows for twice a year, a max of 14 days, of temporary signage.
So the temporary signage is intended for, like, your big holiday sale, or, you know, you're having a different type of event that's unique to that business. The code does not have this set up for a now-hiring, you know, regulation. The now-hiring process signage is something that we want to encourage. We want businesses to be fully staffed, you know, fully, people have employment. What the applicant is requesting is for an increase in these post-signs that are kind of what you see on the side of the roads the Boy Scouts put out and other entities put out. These signs that are being requested are much larger than what you would see typically on the side of the road. They are reverting back to the temporary sign kind of code section at the 14 days, requesting for that to be increased to 35 for their now-hiring event. But also requesting for an increased number of these signs to be located extremely close to the public right-of-way. You know, the now-hiring signage is something that, you know, we would have no issue with if they had one on the building, you know, during the duration of trying to staff the facility. It's the quantity, the size, and the excess that is being requested that staff is concerned about.
In the 35 days, the applicant talked about how many times per year, or was it just every 35 days they rotate the lines?
This variance request would allow for these five signs to be up all day long, 365 for the perpetuity of the building, or the property, no matter who's occupying it. A variance is for the life of the property, not for the circumstance of what they're asking it for. And in this instance, they're claiming it's a temporary circumstance, but you can't put a time on a variance request.
Don't we have permits for certain banners and other?
We do. The permit for temporary signs is the 10 feet from the right-of-way, the four square feet, and the 14-day period. Again, those are for holiday sales, letting you know about special circumstances that are going on. You know, it's not intended to have this type of impact for it, and that's not how it was written. It's the code section the applicant has conferred this now-hiring signage to be geared towards, and has requested the variance to have an increase.
Anything else, question? The applicant likes anything?
These signs are intended to be up for 35 days, and they exist, they would exist on the outside or placed outside the construction fence. They are specifically aimed to provide reliable staff from residents of the area, in that they are talking about in-person hiring events at a local facility so that local reliable staff can be employed. Sheet finds that if you have employees who live close to your store, they have a better staff, and that's what the purpose of these signs are. They are, the one to the right, I don't know what you're looking at, but the smaller one is not a large sign. It's a very small sign, and it would be changed out for each of the hiring event, each of the three hiring events. So it would state, "On this place, at this time, at this date, there is going to be a higher, in-person hiring event." And it would be changed out, like, so it'd be out the first, it'd be out one, the week before the event. It'd be out for a portion of the week where the event occurs, that would be removed. And then the next week, they would advertise the next event. And that's where we get the 35 days. Basically, you end up with seven weeks, or five weeks of these hiring events. That's, that's all I have regarding these signs.
If the commission doesn't mind, I have a couple of questions for the applicant, because this variance was dropped off with the rest and wasn't something that was expected. So what is the duration of the construction fence that goes around the property? Because you're showing you want 35 days for now-hiring signage, so theoretically, in my mind, that's 60 days from the store opening. The construction fence is during when heavy equipment's being moved around the facility. And if, you know, that's removed well prior to two months in advance of the building being open, then what's the need of having it past the construction fence if it's not present on the site? That was something you mentioned, and then also, the 35 days aren't consecutive, but sporadic 35 days. So how would that be something that, I think that's something the commission would want to see, is timeframes for that, so that way it could be regulated, if it's something they would approve? I'm just imagining from my standpoint, knowing the sign's out on a Thursday, it's gone on a Tuesday, so I have five days added to their calendar of the 35 that have been allowable. And when do I get to 36 to notify, you know, the applicants? There seems to be a lot of inconsistencies in how to ensure that if the variance gets approved, how it's enforced towards that approval. And then also, I guess I'm a little unclear on the timing of when these signs would go up in relation to the construction stage and where the site's at.
My understanding is that generally, these signs are placed out four months after the construction fence is, after that is erected. So it is out, these are out at the same time as the construction fence, just at the very end of that timeframe. So about four, and sometimes four and a half months out, they have put these signs up for these specific events. They are consecutive, there are consecutive weeks, five consecutive weeks. I'm not sure, did I miss more? Did you need more from me? I'm happy to.
I guess I'm just trying to understand the need for the number of signs and the placement of them, like, temporary sign F-1.1 and F-2.1 would be outside of the construction fence in, you know, in the area past it. You know, the signage, the construction fence in itself, in my experience, isn't really set to the property limits. It's set to the limits of the disturbed area for construction. So you could pull back temporary sign B-3.2, F-2.2, and F-1.2 to be compliant at that 10-foot realm. I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding the need for the various pieces and parts, because not a lot of information has been presented explaining that need, just the timeframe.
Understood. One solution would be to table this one also. And we can confer and figure out what information you need from us to understand this particular kind of signage need better.
I mean, it would be helpful for an enforcement perspective from my instance, but I think it's more the commission should have a clear understanding as well. And if I don't have a clear understanding, I can't guide them on any questions they have for me on this.
Yeah, I mean, it's a bit of a difference of variance, like you said, is somewhat of a permanent thing, and I feel like we have other ways that we can achieve what they're wanting to do with permits and other signs and stuff like that, so. Feels like it, I mean, I could be wrong, but.
And that's one, Mr. Deeds, in my staff report, you know, they're allowed to have a now-calling and coming-s soon sign for the entire duration of construction. If they would like to replace that, replace a portion of that with the now-hiring events that get swapped out with the coming soon, that would be totally compliant and would not have the need for this variance request.
As long as it's 10 feet.
Yeah, as long as it meets the construction coming-s soon sign standards, which is basically size and location.
Can I go ahead and move to table this one as well, and get that additional information to Mr. Moore?
Look, excuse me. We still need to do public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak? Ms. Lasco?
I would just mention, and I think that we all know that area and that area, that gender road, Winchester Pike area, is already what I consider to be a looming nightmare, and I think it's only going to get worse. And I would, I would suggest to act on the side of being conservative with the signage for the safety and the peace of the community and the people. Because that area, and if you don't think it is, but that area is going to just become worse, and I think that if you have a whole bunch of signs and they're potentially not in the right-of-way, it is going to be a distraction. So that is what I see for that area right there, is that you need to be very conservative. And I'm not against people getting hired or anything like that, but I think you need to think about what's going on at that area as you make that decision.
Anyone else? See, no rush. I will move that we close public hearing.
I'll second. Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Okay, motion to table variance application VA-22-011, also per the request of the applicant.
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
The final variance application on tonight's agenda is VA-22-012. This is a variance from Chapter 1189.11 subsection H1 and H5 to allow for construction and coming-s soon sites, to allow for more than what is permitted for an individual business and to be closer to the right-of-way than what's permitted. Like the previous application, the applicant is requesting for three construction banners and now-hiring banners announcing the store to be affixed to the construction fence. The location of these signs, two of them are shown on the screen. It is unclear where the third one's going to be located, but the applicant noted a total of three. The signage is requested to be closer than 10 feet to the public right-of-way, and we're requesting for more than the single construction now-calling, coming-s soon sign that's permitted for the zoning district. Special circumstances and conditions do not exist for this application. The applicant is requesting to have an increase in number of new construction and coming-s soon signs than what is permitted for the property to have. The zoning code would not deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zoning district. Coming-s soon signage is regulated for all businesses equally. The signage conditions and circumstances do not exist for this, special circumstances and conditions do not exist for this variance request. and conditions do not exist for this variance request. The applicant is requesting for a number of signs that exceed the amount permitted, again, for construction and now hiring events for the new store. Granted, this variance would confer undue privileges denied by the zoning code, and granting this variance could adversely affect the public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare, as the number of signs being requested are within two feet of the public right-of-way, and that signage is restricted to be a minimum of 10 feet from the public right-of-way. As the staff is recommending that variance application VA-22-0212 be denied as presented.
So Andrew, it appears the sizes of a single sign is within our zoning code. It's the distance off of the right-of-way?
It's the distance and the quantity, correct?
Okay. Do we have any variances in the recent past that we've talked about constructing?
We have never reviewed or approved a variance for increasing temporary signs or now construction signs or any other type of signage that is non-permanent in nature.
No other questions for staff?
We'd like to request a good motion to table this as well with the rest of the graphics.
Be tabled as well? Okay. Public hearing? Anyone who wants to speak to this subject?
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I move the close.
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Ms. Willingdon?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes. And I'll make a motion to table VA-22-012.
I'll second. Mr. Ritchie, yes. Ms. Willingdon?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Thank you for your consideration.
The last application for this evening is site development plan 22004. The owner is BD-33 Partners LLC. Applicant is Gavin Jones. It's for a 11.86 acre parcel at the southwest corner of Diley and Bucy Road. It's actually two parcels here. There's a 10-acre parcel that is owned by BD-33 Partners. And there's a little less than two-acre parcel owned by Donley Investments that it was part of the former South Central Power Regional Office Site. So looking at the zoning of this parcel, the property is zone limited manufacturing. It is part of the Canal Point Industry and Commerce Park. Some of the public comments talked about a plan. This has been a plan that's 25 years in the making. And so the city acquired this property in 1997 through the Canal Winchester Industry and Commerce Corporation and immediately sold the site to South Central Power, the 20 acres. The reason that was done is because South Central Power had a need to expand, but it was also to assist the city in establishing an industrial park. And so South Central Power bought the site from the city of Canal Winchester, which enabled us to have the funds to be able to build Dove Parkway and to start to build the Canal Point Industry and Commerce Park. And so, you know, speaking about a plan, this is probably one of the best planned areas in Canal Winchester. There are deed restrictions here, there's a Canal Point Owners Association, there is the Violet Point Overlay that talks about the industrial park and the standards that are set for that, which is in addition to our regular LM zoning code. So this, there's been significant time and energy invested into planning this park. This is the last large site within the park that would allow for, for development. So what the applicant's requesting this evening is a site development plan for a new 209,631 square foot industrial building. When looking at the zoning, again, this site is zone limited manufacturing. The site to the east across Diley Road is zone planned commercial district. It is a vacant 35.5 acre tract. To the south and to the west are both limited manufacturing parcels. To the west is Donley Concrete Cutting. They're a fairly new tenant. They purchased the former South Central Office Building and have located there. To the south is five-star heating and cooling, the Lucky Bones daycare, and then a multi-tenant building with Culligan, Hamilton Home Products, and other businesses. To the north is the city of Pickerington. And across Bucy Road in the city of Pickerington, that is a vacant site that is zone planned commercial or PC3. While it's vacant currently, there is currently a proposal before the city of Pickerington for a conditional use. I believe they're doing a conditional use application there. But there's a proposal to construct a Sheets gas station on the corner of Bucy and Diley Road. So we are working with Fairfield County, Fairfield County Engineers Office, and Violet Township on the review of the traffic study for that Sheets location. So in this specific location, Bucy Road, part of that is in the Canal Winchester Corporation limits, part of it's in Violet Township unincorporated. Pickerington is only annexed to the north right-of-way line. And so we're dealing with multiple entities on the review of any traffic-related items as it relates to this project and the Sheets project in Pickerington. Looking at the site plan, the site meets all the required setbacks from a zoning perspective. The front setback 50 feet, which this being a corner lot, it exceeds that in both directions, the side 25 and the rear 25. Access and parking to the site access is proposed from two access points on Bucy Road and one right-in, right-out access point on Diley Road. So the right-in, right-out access point is within an area that has a median. And so that median will prevent left turns either into or out of the site. And so it's not designed with typical pork chop that would restrict turn movements because the median prevents that from taking place. There is a turn lane at Diley Road, and so there's a signalized intersection there as well that will control traffic in and out of the sites. The site is designed to circulate with, you know, the employee traffic using the first access point on Bucy Road with the furthest west access point designed to serve truck traffic. The truck court in the rear is connected to the parking lot in the front because the Violet Township Fire Department requested that they have 360-degree access around the building. So I believe that access point will be controlled in some manner that would prevent trucks from going out. The design of the parking lot limits their ability to make those turns, for one thing, but I believe there'll be some kind of access restriction there that would prevent the trucks from going out, but it would still allow an emergency to have 360-degree access around that building. Again, we worked with the Fairfield County engineer on reviewing this. The applicant's traffic engineer evaluated trip generation for the site and determined the project will likely generate 49 peak hour trips in the AM and 51 peak hour trips in the PM peak hours. These are spread over three access points, so they'd not be, they'd not meet the warrants for any turn lane or signal improvements. We shared that information with the Fairfield County engineer, and he agreed with that assessment that a traffic study, a full traffic study, wouldn't be necessary in this location. The parking proposed on the site provides 210 parking spaces located to the north and the east of the building. The code requires one per thousand square feet, so 210 is the minimum number of spaces required, so they meet the parking requirements in regards to that standard. I will point out, the applicant is dedicating additional right-of-way. This is on the west, the westernmost portion of the site that's currently owned by Donley Investments. The applicant will be dedicating 22 and a half feet of additional right-of-way in that location, which would allow future improvements to Bucy Road if necessary. That'll match up with the right-of-way to the east, so it would just be continuous throughout the entire site. In terms of loading spaces, I talked about the truck court. The maximum required number of loading spaces is seven. The applicant is providing 12 loading docks on the building, so they would meet the code requirements there. And then the applicant is providing pedestrian access by constructing a five-foot sidewalk along Diley Road and then an eight-foot asphalt multi-use path along the Bucy Road frontage. There will also be pedestrian access to the front door and the front walk that'll run in front of the building, and that takes place in proximity to the western driveway you can see there. And that's due to grading and landscaping, which we'll talk about. That's why that location was chosen. So the landscaping on the site, the applicant would be required to plant 100 trees on the site due to the size of the building and the required, the number of parking spaces on the site. The applicant has proposed that they would plant 121 trees, exceeding the number of trees required per the code. The majority of the trees are located along the road frontage, both Diley Road and Bucy Road, and those are done in conjunction with mounding and a landscaping hedge. And so the mound in the majority of this site is a three-foot mound. Some areas, it's a two-foot mound. But in the areas where it's less than, less than four feet where there is parking, they're required to have the landscape hedge. So as you can see, there's hedgerow, mounding, and trees. There's also a significant number of trees on the south side of the site to help screen the, further screen the loading dock from, the view from the south. And again, more details there on the mounding. The mounding won't impact the visibility or sight lines from the driveways coming out of the site due to the setback in the nature of the right-of-way being wider and the additional right-of-way being dedicated there. And again, this is, the setback here is 25 feet, the parking is setback 25 feet from both the Bucy Road and the Diley Road right-of-way. So that landscaping and mounding takes place in that 25-foot setback. Again, here's some of the clustered evergreen trees that are taking place to the south. We have had the urban forester look at this from a monoculture perspective. We require that no more than 15% of the trees, I believe what the standard is, be from the same genus. And so the applicant has provided landscaping that meets all the requirements in terms of the variety of trees that are required to help encourage that the different species of trees to prevent future disease that, like we've had with the ashbore and others that are, are coming our way. And again, here's a color rendering that gives you a better idea. In terms of utilities to the site, utilities here, there's a 12-inch water main that runs along Diley Road frontage and an eight-inch main along the west lot line. The plans show an eight-inch waterline loop around the site for fire flow and a two-inch service tap for the building. The fire, the fire line around the site is a private line, and so the city would not be required, required to maintain that line or the hydrants on that line. The sanitary service is a 12-inch line along Diley Road and an eight-inch line along the west lot line. The applicant's proposing to have a six-inch sewer service on both the east and the west sides of the site. And so there's adequate capacity to serve both water and sewer in this location. Stormwater, you can see that it pros the tension pond that'll be to the south of the site. It'll be retained on the site. And then there is an existing concrete channel that serves this site and runs to the west down to Hal Pond. And Hal Pond was the regional stormwater basin designed for Canal Point to handle the water quality requirements for all of the Canal Point development. And so this would drain, so water quantity would be detained on the site, water quality would be, be held in the, in the Hal Pond with the outlet that's already existing here. In terms of site lighting, the lighting for the site will be handled by wall packs primarily. And then there is one light post. The light post is a 28-foot in height. The photometric plan here shows the requirements set forth in the Violet Point Overlay District are met in terms of the light height, intensity, and averages. So in this site, you're restricted to 30 feet in height. For the lighting, this is a 28-foot height, high pole, and there's just one post, and it's, it's along the Diley Road frontage there in the area of the connection between the truck court and the parking, just based on that, that area of the parking lot need to be lit, that can't be lit from the wall packs on the building. But there is no spillover on the site in terms of lighting exiting the site, so it'll all be, just be on the parking lot itself. In terms of building elevations, there's color elevations provided here. The building is proposed to be constructed of precast concrete panels with accent paneling around the building office entries. All entry features include large glass storefront systems with canopy systems over them. A false entry has been provided on the Diley Road frontage, so if you look at the bottom left corner of your screen, that is the Diley Road frontage. The applicant, we'd asked them to break up that to meet the architectural requirements of the Violet Point Overlay, and they have done that. So there will not actually be a storefront there associated with that, with an entry in that location, but there is storefront glass canopies so that it looks like an entry and helps break up that, that Diley Road facade. Another item to note is the roof height has been held on this building. And so the roof is obviously sloping to the, to the south here, and so the roof height's been held all the way across there. You can see there's some variation in the roof height, especially around the entries to help highlight those points in the building and also break up the facade and the massing of the building a little more. And this meets all the standards of the Violet Point Overlay District in terms of building design and colors. Signage has not been presented with this. This is a speculative building construction, so the tenants have not been determined at this point in time. But any signage proposed would need to meet the requirements of the Violet Point Overlay standards, which we have changed. It used to be 50 square feet. It's, it's 100 square feet now is what's permitted for each tenant sign that's there. Here's the color renderings to show a little more of that architecture and the design. You can get a much better idea of the color, the roof heights, and what they're proposing to help break up the massing of the building. Again, this is the, the center entry. This is designed to be a, up to four tenants in the building. And so you have the two kind of corner entries and then two center entries, which are shown here. And then this is the, the Diley Road frontage. Again, you can see the false storefront that's been added there. The seed of land use committee met on June 9th to review the application for the proposed industrial building and recommended the application be approved as presented. The committee commented on the additional architectural elements added to the building and noted they were a nice touch that went above and beyond the code requirements. Staff recommends approval of the site development plan application SDP 22004 as presented as it meets all requirements of the Canal Winchester zoning code. I'll be answering any questions you all have.
You mentioned Bucy Road right-of-way. Is, is there a plan to improve that road or any part of it?
Not currently, no. You know, the, the application itself doesn't require that there's any additional turn lanes. There are other industrial developments that are taking place along Bucy Road, so there'll be an expansion of manifold and failure that's taking place as well. They'll be doing another 28,000 square feet there, but there's no other additional development planned at this time. So as developments move forward, either in the city of Pickerington, the city of Columbus, or the city of Canal Winchester, we'll evaluate those developments with a traffic study and see if there are improvements required.
And then Lucas talked about this prior, but the development in Pickerington, where the Sheets gas station's looking to go on the corner, that's a part of a 35-acre planned commercial parcel that will have one access on Bucy and one access on Diley.
Three accesses.
Is it three on Diley? So that, that site distribution will have a bigger impact on that improvement in that immediate corridor than any of the Canal Winchester parcels will just due to the size of the property?
Something we're requesting through, you know, both our engineer and the Fairfield County engineer is that we have, that the Sheets traffic study take into account all 37 acres that are there, just because of the shared access points. So it's likely there, there may be some improvements required because of that.
Okay. And just to refresh, the, the other warehouses there, the, the large warehouse, the Prologic one, or which, I don't know if it's still that one, but how large is that one?
It's 240,000 square feet.
So roughly the same size?
Yes.
Is the applicant present?
So, Andrew- So Andrew and Lucas do a really good job at explaining these. I don't have much to add. I'll hit a couple of points. The first is just to touch on what Lucas has said from the start. This is zone limited manufacturing. We've worked very diligently to try to comply with Canal's code with the Violet Point Overlay. Worked with Andrew and Lucas directly for a couple of months, having them backcheck everything, making sure that we were hitting all those points, and it sounds like that we are. Second, in designing this, I think it's pretty obvious that we wanted to acknowledge the importance of these frontages along Bucy and Diley as well as the entrance that is, I think, just recently been created at the intersection and coming in at Canal Winchester. So we wanted to make sure that we adhered to what was in the works with Canal Winchester, maintain that, add all of the landscaping that we added, the mounding that we've added, add a special touch of design to the building and just make it look like a strong corner within that entrance corridor, if you will. And then finally, why we're here is, you know, we've, we've obtained this land from South Central and from Donley. We want to create as developers a product to market to those that we've been trying to market to. We've got five buildings now that we've wrapped up. We, we found this little special point of 100,000 square feet to 300,000 square feet, users that a lot of people aren't marketing to. This isn't a big box guy. We look for three, four, five tenants in these, anywhere from 20,000 to 80,000 square feet. These are what we call your flex warehouse. It's, it's all warehouse to most people, but for us, we're trying to get flex warehouse in here. Heavy office, heavy lab, heavy tech. We were the ones who built the building over on Winchester Boulevard where Walgreens is going. Lot of employees, higher salaries. That's the niche that we found, and we're confident that we're going to be able to bring this here as well. Part of that is shown in our design. It's a little more contemporary, I feel, than you would see with normal industrial, trying to gear towards those tech lab users, those local guys. And I wanted to touch on the truck court too and emphasize like the lack of attention that we've put towards those dock positions. We've currently only got 12 dock positions. From our own experience in previously five buildings that we've finished, which are 85% leased, we've only been, we've kept about that same ratio, which ends up being about one dock position per 20,000 square feet on day one. In all those buildings, we've only been asked for four additional dock positions, again, in 85% leased buildings. And some of, some of those that did request it aren't even using there. So we don't see heavy truck traffic here. These users are different. We expect the same. I obviously can't promise that, but that's our intention here. I thought I would mention that. That's what I got.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
How about the, the ratio of parking spaces? Two square footage or whatever is, is the measure?
So we would typically push for that amount. This is a comfortable amount for, for the heavier office that we might see or the lab that we might see. A lot of jurisdictions require far less with industrial, and we end up, I, we haven't got any variance for more parking, but we always put in a little bit more, at least future parking, because we end up getting more employees in those spaces. This is the sweet spot. What you guys have required is right about what we would want anyways and feel confident in that.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Anyone got ideas? Anyone want to make a motion?
Public hearing? Oh, no, no public hearing?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve SDP-22-004.
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes? Ms. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
In terms of old or new business on tonight's agenda, start off by saying the obvious. We made it to the new building. This is the first meeting in here. I think it, my recording saves and I'm able to have some audio to type from that we, I will call this meeting space a success. I hope you guys enjoyed the kind of upgrading technology of the monitor in front of you to make things a little more clear, to follow along where I'm at. You know, as we get things progressed, if there's any kind of comments, you guys or initial feedback from these meetings, let me know. It's always good to help kind of improve on the base that we have here.
We do have a, a overhead projector and a screen that are still yet to be installed. They were, our projector came with a cracked lens and we're a few months out on getting the lens, so.
Or, or ever, if, you know. You never know what the...
So there will be more, better, the audience can see the screen behind you and obviously they'll be able to see that much better when they're listening to it.
Yeah, and the, the idea too with the projector in this wall is in case anybody's standing at the podium and they have stuff they want to present, they can hook right up to it, turn around, show you kind of where it's at. I don't know how many are aware of a projector accepts a laser pointer and TVs or monitors do not. So that's just like a very little minor thing that I think will make a big difference for people to kind of follow on what's going on. I guess in terms of other kind of old or new projects, the Turbo Wash project in front of the Walmart Center, their civil engineering has been fully approved, so they can submit building permits at any time. The Wright Pack Credit Union, we are, are having a pre-construction meeting for them tomorrow. Their civil engineering is approved. They're submitting their building permits now. The Taco Bell in front of Meyer, they have submitted their civil engineering plans. They want to get those wrapped up in the next 60 days and have their building permits approved to start construction as quickly as possible. Council waived the third reading on that plan to kind of help speed them up, so they, their intent is to close before the year is over, and they want to get weather in the building before kind of the snow falls, so that's kind of their, their projected timeline at this point. In terms of other kind of new construction projects, I don't think I could think of any others, but in reference to the comments this evening from the, the city council re-zoning discussions for the North Point development. City council approved a PID development text for North Point Phase III and IV. That was approved by emergency for that property, and so that went into effect immediately. So we are expecting the applicant to be on the July agenda for their final development plan. The final development plan in this case would follow the approved development text that council approved, and then wherever the text falls silent goes back to our zoning standards. So we'll make sure to provide a copy of that for you guys for that review process. And then on, last night, city council approved the rezoning for the Stoughton Industrial project, which is just north of the North Point existing buildings that are onsite. That project is what we're calling Canal Crossing Phase III. For you guys that can remember back to my PowerPoint that showed the, the map of that entire kind of complex and how that was planned out from its initiation in 2018. Other than that, I don't have any other old or new business.
We have the first steering committee meeting for the comprehensive plan, so that process is now started. So we'll keep you updated at each meeting kind of how we're progressing and make sure you're aware of any public engagement that's going to take place. I think our next meeting is scheduled for later in July, but there'll be lots of opportunities for, for public meetings and public engagement, and we hope that you all will be engaged in that process.
And the, the first meeting is, for your knowledge, was helping the group understand what a comprehensive plan is, what planning achieves, how to create a successful plan, and then also just getting some feedback on, you know, their preferences on who to reach out to, included in the process from a kind of macro level and really getting to know the group. That way the consultants can kind of start diving in and making things a lot more specific. So yeah, as things move along, we will kind of keep you updated. Rick missed you there. Yeah, it was, I think you'd have been a good addition, telling us your favorite memory of Canal Winchester and getting to have the group a little, know a little more about you, but you didn't miss much in terms of content to be contributing towards shaping the plan, so it was a good soft intro meeting. Laura Taylor, the, the audience this evening could help fill you in. She was there at the meeting. She's one of the Franklin County residents on the committee, so I'm sure she'd be glad to help fill you in on any specifics that happened. We are hoping that the, if it hasn't happened yet, the audio and the minutes for that are, we're supposed to go out very soon for those that couldn't meet, meet the meeting, catch up and just provide a constant reminder for everybody in the group kind of where we left things and how to, how we're planning on moving forward, so.
Anything else?
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, yes? Ms. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Timeout, nine o'clock.